Mrs. Budowski? Oh, you need the remote. Mrs. Budowski, can you come in? Mrs. Budowski, do you hear us? Mrs. Budowski, do you hear us? She doesn't look muted. Uh, she can't hear us, I was gonna say. Have her mute, I'm mute.
Okay, in the meantime, Mrs. Peng is here.
Mrs. Peng is here. Mrs. Budowski is here. We're just trying to fix that.
And Mrs. Matiker?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone was here.
Thank you. All right, the opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on September 22, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay. Carol, can you hear us now? It's gonna be tough for Carol to vote.
Not now.
Oh, you, can you hear us?
Not now.
No.
She did before, but it's very rare.
Yeah, she did early, yeah. We'll hold off on the superintendent's report until we can get her up and running. Carol, can you hear us? Nope. Yeah, there's nothing going to Carol.
Although even on the YouTube channel.
Now, okay, we got her. We're gonna get feedback? Can you still hear us, Carol? No.
Guys, I got a, I got a message. They say there's no sound on YouTube. Can you check the sound on YouTube?
That's because nobody was speaking.
They're talking about.
Yeah, I don't think this is being zoomed to the public.
It's not?
No.
Oh. Ah, okay.
But YouTube, there should be sound.
Let me, let me, let me text.
Yeah, there's, there's not.
It's not live, okay.
Right.
They're doing the YouTube live though, too, with no sound. That's the problem.
Right now, they're trying to do YouTube live, but there's no sound going out.
Does she call it on the phone?
I'm trying that.
Okay.
You got YouTube, okay? Carol, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Carol, there's gonna be a delay supposedly with you, so we're gonna start, we already took roll call. We roll called you in, and now Dr. Bregan's gonna do his superintendent report.
Thank you, Board President Eriko. Couple things on the superintendent's report.
It's working now.
Some proposed resolutions. The first one is a first reading of fifteen Board of Education policies. Fourteen of those are mandated policies by the state, and they were reviewed by our policy committee as well as our board attorney. There were some minor tweaks we had to put in those policies to, that are unique to our school district, but for the most part, they were the state mandated requirements contained within those policies. The one policy that we did address, seventy-two fifty, school facility names, and our board policy committee thought it would be appropriate to clearly define in a succinct manner the process in order to do that, and that'll be contained in the first reading of those policy changes. In addition to that, there's a resolution to approve me as the representative for the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. That position had been held for a number of years by Beth Maroney, who did a fabulous job in it. Beth, you will be sorely missed. I spoke to their superintendent, Mark Vinkelstein, who spoke extremely highly of all your efforts, and I know just one particular thing was that Wingman program, so kudos to you, and it gave a lot of credibility to our district as well. For me, I'm really excited to be a part of the Ed Services Commission. I began my career there while I was still in college in nineteen eighty-six, working at one of their special needs school in Saro, and it's somewhat of a coming home, so I'm looking forward to participating on their board at the Ed Services Commission in New Jersey. Next up, you'll find a resolution for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, otherwise known as NJQSAC. It requires us to approve a statement of assurances across the five district performance review areas: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Personnel, and Operations. That'll be put on the agenda for approval. Once that's been approved, there should be an onsite schedule, onsite visit scheduled with the state where they come in and verify it. We reviewed all those DPR areas with our administrative team, and we met a hundred percent compliance in all those areas, with the exception of Instruction and Program, and the only reason we didn't meet a hundred percent or didn't fully complete that issue is because the state assessments are what you use to evaluate that, and obviously, most of you know, last year, the state assessments were canceled, so the state is gonna use previous information for that, but they fill that information in after you submit it, so that'll be on for approval as well. In addition to that, is the School Safety and Security Plan Statement of Assurances. That has to be, that's a legal requirement. For operational security of the district, we can't share the plan with the board or with the public, so I just trust in myself and Mr. Cassin that we're doing that appropriately and aligned with the state requirements. Also for our reorganization meeting, typically that's done at the three-twelve Pearson Avenue at the Ed Center. We're not gonna do it there this year for social distancing parameters, so this year that will be scheduled in January for the Edison High School Auditorium. In addition to that, under Curriculum and Instruction, you'll find four revised curriculum guides. One is for three-D sculpture class at the middle school level. Then there's three high school classes that are being updated: Advanced Placement Biology, Advanced Placement Chemistry, and Forensics. There's also a resolution to approve professional development. There's only one virtual conference that's on there. As you all know, there's not a lot going on as far as conferences. And regarding the National Council for Social Studies, we have two participants that are gonna participate virtually. Regarding Special Services, it's an update for added district placements that tend to be updated on a monthly basis, you know, as those programs, students come and go in and out of those, and that's our update for this month. Board President Eriko, that's all I have, and at this point, I'd turn it over to the Business Administrator for the Board Secretaries' Report.
Hold on one second, before Dan gets going. Any questions from the board on items, the superintendent's report, curriculum, or pupil special services? I'll start up top. Any questions?
Board President?
Mr. Shi?
Yeah, just one quick question about these curriculums. Are they for next school year, or they're revised for the current school year?
They're gonna be for this year. They're just revisions to get them board-approved. They've already been enacted, and we're putting them in place in the classrooms, I would believe. Is that correct, Ms. Polikowski?
So we're already following that, the curriculum, just need approval.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else up top?
I just had a question. So under this NJQSAC, can you just explain, Dr. Bregan, once again, why we have a score of forty percent on Instruction and Program? I think you said that if we did not have the, the state, that's the only reason?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, that's a great question, Mrs. Matigore. As I said, in Instruction and Program, items one through seven are the district's performance across all your subgroups for your state assessments. In the elementary gauge, it's the NJSLA, and it's the end-of-course assessments in the secondary levels. And the state fills in those scores on their own when you submit it. Usually, they would use the prior year's scores, but because those tests were canceled last year, we actually were at a meeting today with the state of all the people in the county that are going through QSAC for this year, and they said you submit it as-is, they will input, they will input those scores, and they're gonna use prior year's data. What that ultimately looks like, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but you know, living in the Corona-verse, that's kinda what we're doing with now.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroney, any questions? Mrs. Budowski? Any questions? Did we lose her again? Well, you try to fix that. Mrs. Patel, no questions? All right, let's just see if I can get... Mrs. Budowski, can you hear me?
I hear you right now.
Okay, you have any questions on the first three items, or the first three reports from Dr. Bregan? 'Cause she's out again. Mrs. Budowski? Mrs. Budowski? Oh, okay. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Is that wrong?
Yes, that's me.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any questions on the superintendent's report, curriculum, and instruction, or pupil special services? Any questions?
No.
Thank you. All right, now we can go on to Mr. Mashad's report.
Okay, thank you. First item on my report are, is the minutes for the October fifteenth and twentieth meetings. Everybody has a copy of those, and if you have any questions, just let me know. Item number two is the investment report for the month of October. We received interest in the amount of six thousand thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, bringing our total for the year up to twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents. The next set of records are our Board Secretaries' Report for the month of September, and we also followed that with the Treasury School of Money's report, also for the month of September. Next item are the resolutions we'll be presenting for next Tuesday's meeting. The first item is the transfer of funds. Now, this is the first month that we have the ten-month people's salary.
All right, excuse me. Mr. DeAmrin? Please, please. Mr. DeAmrin, one more time, and I have to ask you to leave. Wait through your public portion, you come up and speak. Thank you.
So we have a transfer of funds in the amount of one-point-two million dollars. If you notice, you'll see that everything except for three lines are regarding salaries. When we put this budget together, we do it in February, and there's a lot of changes between February and the September, where we have employees come and go, we have new students coming in, and you'll notice most of these happen to be in the area of special ed. I know that Dr. Conklin has been opening up additional self-contained classes in February. At the time when we put the budget together, we weren't aware of these additional students coming in, so all we're doing in this case is just shifting salary monies from one budget line to another. The only lines that are not salary are health supplies, custodial supplies, and both of those are because of COVID, supplies we needed, and the last, and the other, the other one is work, workman's comp, because our workman's comp premiums were a little higher than I anticipated, so I didn't budget enough in that line. Next item is a grant. We received some information regarding a grant that's available, ten thousand dollars per school, up to a total of, well, actually, for any school that has a playground, because what this is for, it's just for like a canopy to go over the playgrounds, to keep the kids out of these, out of the solar, for, you know, the sun, and we're applying for each one of the schools that have a playground. We're not sure exactly what we're gonna receive, but we are putting in for ten thousand dollars for every one of our elementary schools, as you can see, and we need board approval to submit that, and once we receive information on how much we're getting, the board will then have to accept those funds. Next item is the grant for the Alyssa's Law. It's in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand one sixty-six. We did receive, we did receive notification that we're gonna receive, we're gonna want to submit that for that. Mr. Cassin is the one who's working on that for us, and this is in, this is really for the silent alarms that we have, the panic buttons that we have, for notification directed to the police department, and the state has provided nine hundred and sixty-six thousand for us to actually do that. Next item is a grant for the State Farm Good Neighbor Grant for ten thousand dollars for each one of the schools, Edison High, TJ, and Hoover, for the Avid Program, and we need approval board approval to submit for that. Next item is the, is another grant for equipment. This is a brand new, we just got this, we never heard of this before. We can go for up to twenty thousand dollars for up to eight schools to replace some of the old food service equipment we have. So we, we wanna submit for that, we're submitting for, not to exceed a hundred and sixty, because eight, eight, twenty thousand dollars for eight class, eight schools is a hundred and sixty max. I doubt we're gonna get that, because we can't exceed twenty thousand, and you can only put in for two items. So if you go for a freezer for eight thousand, you go for another freezer for eight thousand, that's sixteen, so you're not gonna get to twenty. But just in case we do, I wanna make sure I'm putting in for not to exceed a hundred and sixty, that's the max we can get. Next item is the submission and acceptance, because we already notified, we're notified we're getting this. This is for the Special Olympics Project Unified Grant for an amount of twenty thousand dollars, and what this is for is for the students that are in this program. We pay coaches either five hundred or a thousand dollars per coach, and we get reimbursed by this grant for one hundred percent of that, that amount of money that they get for their coaching. Number seven is another grant we got from the federal government. It's called the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant. It's eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and this is for additional items that we need for the coronavirus, which is gonna include a lot of the disinfectant materials and, and some of the, some additional thermal, thermal monitors that we have. So we went to board to accept those funds, and we already were notified we're getting them. Next item is a revision to the extraordinary aid amount we received. We had, we had the board approve this, or accept this, a couple of months ago, but at that time, it was two-point-six million, and they came back and said that there were some additional funds available, and they raised it up to two million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand. So we would like to have the board accept those funds. The next item is a amendment to our IDA grant. Every, every year when the grants are over, the federal grants, if there's anything left over, they call it carryover, and you can use that in the following year, but we have to have the board approve an amendment to the original grant to include those carryover grants, and that's what number nine is for. So we wanted to include another two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in our IDA basic grant, and we only had fifteen dollars left in preschool, but we're gonna, we're gonna put in for it anyway, so we want it all, all to be available to us for this year. Number ten is a bid that we had back in October. There's one route in here that we didn't think we'd need to run, but we do have to run it, we do have enough students on that, so we'd like to award that grant, that bus, bus bid to DNL Bus Service, who was the low bidder in this case. Then we have some additional bus routes that we would like to award. However, if you see number eleven, some of these two hundred and forty-five dollar DAPR runs, I met with the transportation department yesterday, I went over some of those. We have five routes that are in here, out of the six, and out of those six, we have five of them that only have nineteen students. I wanna table the five, those five, because I wanna be able to do that with an in-house bus transportation, one of our own people. It's, it's gonna save us sixty-one hundred and forty-five dollars a week until, until we do need it, and I would assume we're gonna need it when we, when the time comes, we come back to school full-time, but at this point in time, I'd like to table those five that will be on the agenda for Monday, being, being tabled. The rest of them, we do need at this point, but you're also gonna notice that there's quite a few no bids. So right now, the ones that are no bid at this point, if we need them, we're doing them on a temporary quote that we go through the Ed Services Commission for.
Mr. Mashad, real quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
The LN one, seven, eight, nine, ten, and thirteen, we're gonna table?
Yeah, there's only one that we are gonna run.
Which one?
We are gonna run number LN, LN ten, I believe it is. That has seventeen students on that one run.
Okay.
All the rest of them, there's no more than seven. We have one that only has one student, a couple that have one or, two or three students, and there's no reason to run five routes at two forty-five a day.
Understood. I just wanna make sure we got the routes correct. So one, seven, eight, nine, and thirteen will be tabled.
Correct.
And pulled off the agenda for Monday?
No, they'll be on, they'll be on the agenda, because they were part of a bid. We're gonna put down, we're tabling.
So we gotta table it, gotcha.
It's gonna say tabled.
Thank you.
Okay? The next one is for athletics. This one's for, no, this is to and from school also, this is a rebid. This is the nineteen, remember, we had nineteen routes the first time in October, and nobody bid on nineteen of them? Well, we put them back out, and we still have a number of them that still had no bids, but we did receive bids for several of them, and we'd like to award the ones that came in low for these nineteen routes. We're still looking at seven routes that are not covered. They're still gonna be on, right now, they're on quotes until December first, because these take effect December first. So we'll run them on a quote until we, until we put, we'll have to put another bid out and hope that we get something, but if we don't, we can carry those quotes until we do, do get somebody who would, does bid it. Then our activity buses, our buses after school. We bid that, and as you can see, we did get some, not all are covered, but we did get coverage for, from DAPR for most part, at two forty-five a day, which is a little bit more than it was last year, but we need to get those covered, because otherwise, the students are not gonna have buses to back and forth to school for the after-school activities. We do have a number of them, and for some reason or other, Thomas Jefferson and Herbert Hoover, nobody bid on those. I'm not sure why, but we're gonna put them out again, and in the meantime, we're gonna use our in-house people to handle these after-school activities. Number fourteen is the approval, the Financing and Facilities Committee discussed this with Dr. Bregan last week when we had our meeting. We have a company that we'd like to bring in, do, to do an evaluation of our back-to-school plan that we have right now, and Dr. Bregan mentioned it to the Financing and Facility, Financing and Facilities Committee, and they agreed that we, this would be a good idea to have this actually evaluated and critiqued by an outside firm, so we'd like to have the board approve that on Monday, not Tuesday. Number fifteen is the, this is the water main that goes underneath the modular classrooms at Woodrow Wilson. We had a, we had a right-of-way over there already, it went directly underneath the modular classrooms. Because of the fact that the water company says if there's, if they ever have a break in there, we'd have to move those classrooms, they're going to, now they're gonna divert the water around the classrooms, so they have to set up a new right-of-way that's gonna have, have that, that configuration, and it's gonna, it's a ninety-two thousand three hundred and two dollars and sixty cent cost for that project. The water company's only, we can do it for us, and that's the number they gave us, and that's not, that's, that's a minimum. It could even be a little bit more than that, but I know that Dr. Bregan has been discussing this with the board regarding looking at our architect that put those modules up, to see if there's any possibility that we can have them sharing the cost on that, or maybe pay for the whole thing. So we'll get back to everybody on that one, so we find that out. Item number sixteen. PEPM is a Pennsylvania, a cooperative purchasing agreement that we've been, we've been with for a couple of years now. I did put it on here, even though we didn't have to. I put it on here specifically, because now, Amazon is part of that PEPM program, so we can now purchase through, through Amazon, and the problem we had with Amazon before is because they didn't accept purchase orders. Now through this PEPM program, they have to accept purchase orders, and now we will be able to purchase through Amazon, through the PEPM program, so we'd like to have board approve that. Item number seventeen, we have a, this is a voluntary life insurance policy, one hundred, one hundred thousand dollar guaranteed issue from Mass Mutual. This was given to the ETA to evaluate it. I usually go to them, because fifteen-hundred of our two thousand employees are part of theirs. They have their finance committee go through it, and he came back and said that he would authorize, he was okay with us authorizing us to offer this to our staff. It'd be a hundred percent payroll-deducted voluntary life insurance policy, so we'd like that board approve that. Number, number eighteen is the, this is non-public security monies we got for, for the non-public schools. There's a purchase order ready to go out from Middlesex County Kindergarten Program, grade seventy-five. The board needs to approve that before we send it. Number nineteen is a list of some obsolete items from the schools that we received. We just need board approval to approve those as obsolete, so we can have those discarded. Then we have the bill list for the month of October, in the amount of twenty-six million seven oh three six fifty-two seventy-nine. Obviously, the biggest chunk of that is our payroll. Payroll's running somewhere in the neighborhood of seven and a half million dollars per pay, so that's about fifteen, sixteen thousand of that, or sixteen million of that is payroll. And then the last item is the transportation report, which is just a reiteration of the bids we, that we awarded previously. The county office requires us to identify our bus routes individually, because in a lot of cases, we used to put them down as a tiered run, and in this case, we have them all as individual runs, and that's why this thing, this report, the transportation report, has to break it up. If it's a triple-tiered run, and it's gonna cost us a thousand dollars a day, but it's gonna be elementary, middle school, and high school, we have to separate those into sections and then report that to the county office, which is what this report does for us.
And that concludes my report. Mr. Eriko? Thank you, Mr. Mashad. Questions from the board? We're gonna start with Mrs. Budowski. Any questions on Dan's report? No? Ms. Falgore, Patel? None? Mrs. Maroney? Up top, I'll go with Mrs. Pang? Dr. Chen? Mr. Shi?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. Dan, number seven, about this federal relief grant. Is this to offset the money we already spent, or this is just a, you know, new money coming in?
We are able to go back and retroactively charge some of the things that we've already purchased from there, and that's what we're gonna be doing. We're gonna try to make sure that we, most of this, as you know, we've gotten a number of federal grants for the, for this COVID.
Correct.
And this would help us cover a very good, a large chunk of all those expenditures.
So is this is still seventy-five percent of the actual spend we have? They, they will reimburse us up to seventy-five percent?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
All right. The other thing, just a comment.
Excuse... Sorry, Mr. DeAmrin, you gotta leave. Mrs. DeAmrin? Mr. DeAmrin? Mr. DeAmrin, please. All right, one, one conversation. One conversation. Thank you, public. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Shi.
All right. So, all right, so this is still seventy-five. So the other thing, I just wanna make a quick comment. I'm very happy to see a lot of these grants that's coming in, and hope this is because we have a new grant writer that's, that's helping us on this. I'm really happy to that. Some of these are new grants, which is really, really great, and some of the other are the traditional, so that's, you know, on top of that, we add more. The other question is number fourteen, this consulting services, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Do we bid on this, or this is, you know, since this is professional services, we don't, we don't need to go full competitive bid on that?
Well, it's under, it's under the bid limit, so we just needed a second quote. Well, it's under the bid limit, so we just needed a second quote. It's not a professional service.
It's not, okay.
No, no. But it's over the quote law, $6,600, but it's under the $44,000 bid limit. So we do have a second quote.
So we have two vendors who bid on this?
Two quotes that we got. And this was the lower of the two.
Oh, okay. All right. And the reason we need this is?
I could speak to that, Mr. Shi. I contacted this company because I heard that they were doing these services where they come in as a third-party oversight to your policies and procedures in addition to your onsite application of those policies and procedures in dealing with trying to mitigate the impact of COVID on your staff and students. And we thought, when we brought it up with the Finance and Facilities Committee, it'd be nice to have a third-party oversight that would do one of two, perhaps one and more things. But to take a look at our stuff and say, hey, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Or, hey, you're doing an okay job. These are things you could do to enhance it, make it more effective. So it is a policy oversight, there's a procedure oversight from our manuals, as well as our policies in place for a restart and recovery. But also coming onsite and looking at the practices as they're applied in each of the buildings when the students and staff come back. We thought that third-party outside person as a company coming in, giving us a look, gives us a real transparent approach to seeing how effective we are in implementing what we say we're doing, as opposed to us just walking around and saying, yeah, we're doing a great job. So that was our thought and that's why we included it on there.
Okay, thank you. So the other things, I know some of these consulting companies, they can also help us for additional grants and those things. I assume this company will help to seek those, you know, money as well for us? That's part of their service?
It wasn't, but we could see if that's part of it. They didn't mention that they would help us facilitate any grant monies.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one quick question. So Dan, besides the COVID grants, all the grants that you mentioned, are these typically something we get every year or is there something new this year?
No, there's some new ones on here.
Okay.
Our new grants writer, Maria Lopez, is doing a great job. She's finding money all over the place.
Okay, great.
Anytime she does, we put it on the agenda. We'll take anything they want to give us.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Conway?
I just have one quick question on the obsolete items. There's a number of Chromebooks and computers included in the list. And I was just wondering if our tech department ripped them apart first to take any of the usable equipment out of it before it becomes obsolete. And obviously, Ralph, you had me thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
And could I just say something?
Sure.
Okay. In response to your quest about the professional services for checking being the third party, the other thing that we had discussed at facilities, this would give us a little more insurance should we run into any problems with like an insurance problem or somebody suing us during this COVID session. Not only are we taking precedent, making sure our property is clean, we also will have it in writing from a third party that we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing and beyond. And that would give us more protection because the $37,000 is nothing compared to what somebody might sue us for if they ever sued us for like negligence. So that was another thinking on my part as to why I thought it was a good idea.
Okay, so since you mentioned money, I'm sorry. Just one follow-up. Is the 37 for the end of this school year? Or this is, what kind of a time period we're talking about? Or just one report? What kind of a period is this?
No, it was an initial investigation.
Okay.
Yeah, we anticipated it happening pretty quickly. It's not going to be an ongoing thing. There's two onsite visits covering over six, covering six schools as part of that cost, as well as the oversight of the policies and procedures. So I envision if the board approves this, moving forward pretty quickly. Trying to get this done within the next 60 days, I would say.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Not yet, sir. We will. We're not voting on anything tonight. Okay? You're welcome. Okay. Board member, open discussion. I'm going to go to Mrs. Bedowski again. Mrs. Bedowski, any open discussion?
I don't think so. I can barely hear you, but let's go along.
No problem, thank you. I'm going to start up top again. Mrs. Pang, any open discussion? Mrs. Pang?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Chen? No? Mr. Shi?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the last, so if I can. I'd like to be the last one speaking, if I can.
Yeah. Ms. America?
No.
Not at this time, maybe later.
Okay. Mrs. Telf?
Yeah, I just had one quick thing. I wanted to thank the students and staff of Lyndon Al School who put together such a heartfelt video for the Menlo Park Veterans Memorial Home as it was featured on My Central New Jersey. So I just wanted to thank them for doing such a good job with that video.
Thank you, Mrs. Telf, some good news. Mrs. Maroni? Nothing at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I just have one announcement. I think I was just texting a message that tomorrow night Edison High School is playing a football game. 7:00 PM versus Helsborough. I think it's a playoff game or consolation game, whatever they're calling it. But if the public's around, 7 o'clock tomorrow night, Edison High School. All right, Mr. Shi, you still want to speak?
Yes. So these, I have like five questions, but I'm going to bundle them together. This one probably needs some help from Mr. Benedict. This is regarding transportation. We heard quite a lot of transportation challenges. We know it's not easy. We have, you know, buses not showing up and so on. So if you can comment on that, okay? Then the other thing related to transportation, we spoke at the previous meetings is about the GPS tracking. And we know that we have the mechanism, we have the tools to do the tracking. I just want to follow up on where we are on that. And the other question, it's in your area, is residence verification. We spoke this probably for a long time. Now we have a new staff that's on board. I just want to find out where we are on these two items. Thank you.
Okay. Specific to the transportation issue first. One of the reasons we ran into issues with the buses, we had bus shortages as far as drivers with our contractors. They began what we call consolidating routes. So in some instances, you had six routes consolidated to one. And so what we did was we reached out to each of the contractors. And so we want a list of all these routes as to how you've consolidated them so that we can keep track of them as a way to head it off. Because what we found was there was a lot of movement with the students as they were coming back in, students who were coming from remote to in-person. And we wanted to make sure we knew where they were and at the same time, what the bus companies were covering. We knew what resources we had as we headed into the beginning of the year. We had a number of uncovered routes, as Mr. Michaud mentioned. We had a number of things that weren't bid out. So what we did was we consolidated a number of buses to open up our resources so that we could start covering those routes that were uncovered. So in part is where we had some fall down with respect to those buses. To your GPS question, we had the geo-tracking installed on 10 of our buses. We had set up cards for a test pool of students as we headed into the spring of last year. Going remote, that had to be tabled. As we opened back up, we were fully remote. October 19th, we come back in and what we found was the students that we had coming back in didn't all, they weren't part of that initial test batch. So we went to the next round. Okay, what students do we have that are available? We identified students. Now we're looking for the buses because again, they're on our buses. So at that point, we had about two weeks, two and a half weeks. With the advent of the second marking period coming up, that student body shifted. So right now, we have identified coming out of this building approximately 11 students that we're going to be issuing cards to at the beginning of the week so that we can start tracking that. We'll start with initial tests. And these are what they call PROX cards. So as the students enter the bus, they'll be able to basically scan in and know where they're at. But what we want to do is we also want to include the student ID number on it and a barcode. This will allow those cards to also be used as they enter the attendance office. If they come in late, they go to the library, you want to take out a book so that we can kind of make it a multi-use card. That's where we're at with that. So look through the beginning of the week before we go out on a little bit of holiday. Those cards getting issued. We're going to familiarize our drivers with them because they have now updated lists. With the shift of the second marking period, part of what we had to go through is is and identify each of the students who were in-house, each of the students who were remote. For the students who are in-house on a four-day or who are sticking to the AB schedule, we had to identify those because we also have to report out all of that student attendance to the state. It's one of the 15 new NJ Smart areas that came out this year. So that's where we're at with that. The residency checks, we have been doing residency checks. Our new investigator is out in the field. He's going out again tomorrow morning to understand how that process actually works. The software itself that he's going to be using is a software that we had to do a site survey and complete that. And the reason for that is because it can only be issued to government entities. And so we passed that site survey. We had the licensing set up and everything. And he's now familiar with the process. He was hired over the course of the summer. He started his 15 days beforehand. He's been working in the office, understanding how the paperwork flows, what he should be looking for and everything. And as that goes through, those addresses for new enrollments will be initially batched in in batches of 1,000. And as they come up, it'll search and reveal where people are residents per this software functionality. And then that's what we'll use for the leads and be able to identify them and then go through the process to move somebody out if they're not actually in Edison, make contact with them and verify that they are in fact not in Edison the way they've told us they are.
Okay, so just a follow-up on that. So I saw that, you know, when the students actually, when they initially come in, they go through our enrollment center, we go through a rigorous process. So there's less of a chance of non-residents enrolling our schools. The issue is more afterwards, after a couple of years, you know, people move out. You know, we don't follow up on that. So these kind of verification, we're more talking about the students who are already in the system for several years. And, you know, we need to check, track whatever the required four or five documents, let them submit. And then, you know, we look at these documents and make sure that these students who enrolled, you know, four or five years ago, still have all these documents that they're in the system. So is that something we're going to look into or we're just going to?
We can do that. The initial, what we're looking at doing is initially hitting the people who have just come in. And part of the fact, the part of the reason for that is with the COVID and the pandemic, we have so many people who are enrolling, the processes coming in online. State regulation says you really only need one proof to open the door and get in. You have 30 days to submit the remaining documents. So for people who haven't given us all four of them, we're going to follow up on that procedure. They get the proper notification. The next step that we're going to go through are those individuals who have been on affidavits. And the reason for that is because they may not actually have those. Those are the people that you'd consider to be the most likely individuals who haven't given you the proper information. And as we go through that, we will then proceed to the next batch of students or the next grade level. What we'll look to do then is hit the grades from, going from fifth to sixth grade and then eighth to ninth grade as we begin to spread out. When you batch it into the system, you're looking at 1,000 that you put in at a time. And then you have to search and come back. Again, it's a very, it's a very sensitive software, I'll phrase it that way. But it's something that will go and look for everything that needs to be looked for and cross-reference it. And then it's really human filtering to go through and see what you're going to actually look at and how you're going to go about doing it. And then from that point, we would descend our standard initial notification of ineligible as we are required to under regulation.
Okay. So just after, you know, before the end of the school year, will we be able to validate at least, you know, one full grade or a couple of full grades?
Oh, yeah. We're looking to validate probably close to four grades.
Four grades?
That's it, we're looking to, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Okay.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, the other thing is more for Dr. Bregan. This is some of the comments that I saw from the parents. You want me to do three at a time or just one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay. So the one is, a lot of parents are concerned because our neighboring schools are going to full remote. And we know that our data is much better. So just comments from Dr. Bregan's as to your thoughts and things regarding what's going on about the other district and in our district.
That's a great question.
And also, you know, we had a survey for the middle school students. If you can, you know, not, I'm sorry. So for the second marking period, if you can just comment on that as to the hybrid plan that we try to do. Thank you.
Okay. Great question. As many of you may be aware, some of our neighboring districts have elected to go totally remote. One of the local ones next door is Woodbridge. I think Old Bridge decided today. Piscataway, New Brunswick, and a few others that I can't call to mention right now. I don't remember. However, every district is unique. Every district has its own number of cases, has its own staff member needs, has its own concerns within that district, and it's unique to that district. Sometimes in the county and in the state, people tend to make generalizations. And if it's good for one, it should be good for all. So I can't speak to what the cases are in other districts or other places. But we're trying to follow as strictly as we can the New Jersey Department of Health, the Edison Township Department of Health, as well as the Centers for Disease and Control protocols for what we should do and how we react when there's a positive COVID case. Since we returned to in-person instruction, and by the way, in-person instruction is for those people who chose that option. Adults that are 18-year-old students, as well as the parents of students that are minors. They elected to come in in a hybrid model. And we only have a half-a-day portion, a single-session model where we don't have lunch to try to minimize exposures so that students can be wearing masks and staff members the entire time. So at the start of hybrid instruction on October 19th, we had on average across the district about 27%, 28% of our students chose to come in when they selected that option. To answer this question tied with Mr. Shi's, for the second marking period, we did another survey. And as long as the pandemic is still impacting our community, we're going to do that on a semester basis. It enables us to plan and staff accordingly. So when we sent the survey out a few weeks ago for the second marking period, which began this week, there was about 100 student difference. About 100 more students chose to come in person in the hybrid model as opposed to remaining totally remote. Not really significant across the district and across the individual schools. So for all intents and purposes, those numbers have remained fairly consistent. Some schools are higher than others. But getting back to our COVID numbers, since returning on October 19th, we've kept track of the positive cases within the district. And for that first week on 10/19, we had six positive COVID cases. The next week, we had one case. The week after that, although we were not in school that week, that's the week of November 2nd, we had nine positive cases. The following week, 11/9, we had nine cases again. Six adult staff members, three students, one student in the hybrid model in person and two that were totally remote. And for this week, we've had seven cases so far where they were positive. Three adults, one was a substitute, and four students. Of the four students, three were remote and have never been in school. So we're taking it on an individual basis, a school-by-school basis. If we have two or more confirmed positive cases in a school that are not related, we will shut that school down in consultation with our Board of Health and the CDC protocols. Lincoln School had a positive case that we were notified today. That brings that number up to three within a 14-week period that are not connected to the same person or the same exposure. Therefore, following those protocols, Lincoln Elementary School will be totally remote. I believe it's still December 2nd, whatever the actual day works out. So we're doing our best. We want to provide the opportunity for the students that want to come to school to have that option. If their parents are uncomfortable in any way, they have the option always to switch back to totally remote and their child will get their instruction in a remote fashion. I just want to say too, two things. I'd like to commend our staff. You know, I talked to the superintendent and neighboring communities and some of the issues were staff that traveled over that teacher convention days or that week they may have had off like we did. And then they would have to self-quarantine for the 14 days, which limited their ability to put teachers in the classrooms. We didn't have that issue here. We had some staff members that did that, but a very small portion. So kudos to our staff for taking this seriously and trying to be here for our children. And the second thing is, I try to visit the schools as much as I can. I was very fortunate to spend the morning at the Lyndon Al Elementary School. And they have one of the highest percentages of students that attend that school across the district. And it was so refreshing. The students were eager, enthusiastic to be there. And so were the staff, whether they were support staff, teachers, or administrators. So as I reflect on this, when people say, why don't you close? Why don't you send everybody home? why don't you close? Why don't you send everybody home? I think of those children and those staff members that have joy in coming to school every day and having some degree of normalcy. And unless the board directs me otherwise, I would like to continue that for as long as possible. And again, all of this depends on the numbers and how our cases impact. I hope I answered that, Mr. She.
Yes, thank you.
What's up, Mr. She?
Yeah, huh?
Can I say something?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Just to that point, I know everyone watches the news and national news and everything else. If you look at what's going on in the big city next to us, you know, where they now are fully remote, the numbers I heard were they hit the 3%. But in schools, they're like 0.27% infection rate. If you listen to today's Coronavirus Task Force report, they say the safest place to be right now is in schools. Teachers, staff, kids. The infection rate is far below what the national average is or even by towns. So I think we're doing a very good job. Our custodians need a lot of credit for keeping the buildings clean and cleaning it almost hourly probably and doing a great job overnight disinfecting and spraying and everything else. So I think with the help of everyone, including our great custodians and facility managers and teachers and staff, I think we're doing a fabulous job. And as long as we can keep the kids in school, because that's really where they need to be, I think it's a great thing that we're doing. Sorry, Mr. She.
No problem. The other question is, some parents commented on the parent-teacher conference, the, they don't have a lot of a slot. And sometimes with internet connection and stuff, the time gets short. So what are the, what are your suggestions to those parents who are not able to, you know, meet with the teachers during this parent-teacher conference time?
I did hear a few of those comments. Not many, but a few parents had difficulty scheduling their conferences. You know, as a, as a father of three daughters, I know that was difficult for me as well as a working parent trying to get that evening conference slot. Sometimes they booked up very quickly. I would encourage the parent to reach out to the teacher to see if there's a time they could schedule outside of the dedicated conference time to meet. The teachers I know in this district would be more than willing to do that. And if they're not able to do that, just contact the building principal. If that doesn't meet with success, have them contact me directly and we'll make sure we facilitate that. But again, it's been my experience that if you contact our teachers and would like to discuss your child's performance and you were unable to be scheduled or meet that time where the conference was, they're usually more than willing to accommodate that. And if not, please let us know.
Thank you. The last question, this is a happy one. We saw in the newspaper that we are extending our lunch program from five days to seven days. Can you comment on that a little bit? So, thank you.
Absolutely. You know, one of the things the Food Service Committee made on last week was to discuss other options, how we can feed, you know, some of our most food-insecure students during this difficult pandemic time. And it actually came from the committee, but it was also a suggestion from, you know, one or two of our families as well. If the parents that are coming to pick up their foods instead of coming on a daily basis, was there a way that we could somehow make it maybe on a weekly basis? So the work of the Food Service Committee, you know, the members of the board that were on that committee as well as Mr. Michelle, myself, and the members from Chartwells, decided that we're going to offer a seven-day option. The logistics are going to be on the website and how you sign up for the food, how you order it. And we're going to pick it up at both of the high schools, at John P. Stevens High School here and Edison High School on the other side of town. And I think the first pickup is scheduled for Wednesday, December 2nd. I'll get more parameters on that, so don't hold me to that date. But obviously, we don't want students walking home with that much. It would be too heavy. The weekend meals, we saw some of our elementary kids, it was kind of heavy carrying those bags with six meals in it. But the seven days worth of meals will be delivered in a box. It'll be obviously food that can last for that duration and gives some degree of food security for those families most in need. And as opposed to coming every day, they can get it on a weekly basis. And we also decided that we would have that as an option. You don't have to choose that option, but if you do, that's one way to do it. Because we did hear from other parents that really liked the idea of picking it up every day. They thought it was fresher. So kudos to everyone for that. Again, as Mr. She said, that's a definite positive for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments up top here?
Yes, Ralph. Thank you. I just wanted to say two things. The first thing was, on last Friday, I attended the Edison Special Ed Parent Advisory Council via Zoom hosted by Dr. Conklin. And it was a superb presentation by the two behaviorists, Ms. Diane Sickel and Ms., I don't want to put, Despana Facilis. It was a fabulous presentation. It was something that I would wish we could put out for the public to see because they gave such great suggestions that everybody could take advantage of. And I invite any and all parents to attend the meetings in the future because it was so beneficial. I was so impressed. And I thank the ladies for giving such a wonderful presentation and both helpful and educational. The other thing I would like to say is because there's such great things going on in Edison, I am so proud of all the good things that are going on. But at the same time, I am very hurt by the press that we are getting about the negativeness of our township. I guess the latest one was the other day in the Star Ledger depicting Edison as a horrible place and it can't get more politically horrible. And it did. And I was so upset by it. I just felt that I have to mention that we need to work on this. We need for it to come to a fruition, at least the Board of Education's problems, so that we can spend all our time working on the important things that matter to the Board of Ed and not politics. And I would reach out to anyone that is involved with it because I don't know specifically. It's all hearsay at this point. But if anybody would step forward or step down and get this over with so that we can continue what we're here for, and that's to give the students, all 17,000 of them, the best education possible by being in support of Dr. Bregan and what his vision is for this district rather than have to field questions constantly on the politics of this town. I know all towns have a certain amount of politics, but Edison is a big municipality, but I don't feel that we should have a bigger share of negative politics. So I ask anyone that has anything to do with this, please either step up, step down, or get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the lower level? Mrs. Podolsky, I guess you could hear us? Do you have any, anything to say? Anything to say? Okay, you're on mute. Mrs. Patel, anything? Mrs. Maroni, last chance? That's it?
Okay. Now, we're going to go to public comments. Again, you have, what do we got, five minutes?
Six.
Six? Okay. And you're keeping time?
All right. Again, please be respectful, okay, and courteous. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I think that was wiped down already, but wipe it again.
I will do it.
Oh, that's Mr. Benedict was there.
Thanks, Maria.
Got it all dirty.
Mark O'Harris, 43, Oak Hills Road, Edison. From 2013, no, 2012 to 2016, I was honored to serve on this board. And in 2014, I believe it was, we voted at that point, the school board elections were held in April at that point. And yes, the turnout was low, but the diehards came out and they voted for the candidates. In 2014, we had a vote on moving the Board of Ed elections back to November with the general elections. And I think at that time, there are two current serving members who had that vote. I think you, Mr. She, and you, Ms. Maroni. You, along with all the other members, except for Debbie Aines and I, we, Debbie Aines and I dissented on the, on the vote to move it back to November. And we dissented because the fear was that this was going to turn political. As soon as you move it to November, it was going to turn political. And so I was adamant that I did not want that to happen. And so Debbie and I, without speaking to one another about it, but for, we've been discussing it later on, found out that, you know, we were on the same page with it. So alas, they were moved back to November. And since then, the late Debbie Aines and my worst fears have come to pass. I have seen this board become, you know, you're talking, Ms. Conway, about the, you know, all the political repercussions going on in this town. You want it to stop. Well, unfortunately, I think that a Pandora's box has been opened up and there's no stopping this anymore. There's no stopping the politicization of what's going on with the board. And I'm sick about it. I really am. It breaks my heart to see how, and I'm, as one who is actually a longstanding member of the EDO, the Edison Democratic Party, at one point was the vice chair, I have never been comfortable with what has happened. And I feel like this board has become almost a wholly owned subsidiary of the Edison Democratic Organization. So at one point, I think you, Beth, had told me that you regretted that vote at some point afterwards, that you regretted it and you could see exactly what was, what was happening. So one question I actually would like to ask, just out of curiosity through, through you, Ralph, to Mr. She, is I wonder if Mr. She regrets that vote?
Mr. She, if you would like to answer? Yes, you don't have to answer, but.
No.
No, he does not want to answer. He does not want to answer that.
Okay, I'm not surprised. So I'm here right now speaking because that, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, there, once that vote was taken, once the, once the, it was accepted, it was approved to move the elections back to November, as I understood it at the time, it was, there would be four years until they could move it back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So I'm wondering, has there been any talk at all, given what's been going on, has there been any talk at all about moving the elections away from November, the Board of Ed elections away from November?
I think a few members have spoken about it, but nothing, you know, where we would have a vote.
It's time to do that. It's time, folks. It really is. I am so, so uncomfortable with what has happened. And, you know, the, so the, the vote was taken and it was approved in 2014. And the racist flyer, the so-called racist flyer comes out in 2017. And yes, the evidence right now is circumstantial, but it is troubling. It is troubling in terms of the involvement of the, of certain board members, Board of, Board of Ed members, and of certain of the Edison Democratic Organization members. It's time to move the elections away from November and back to on their own. Yes, you're going to lose voters, but you're going to get the ones who are the diehards and, you know, who really do care about what goes on in the Edison school system. So I'm urging you all to please consider moving the elections back and away from November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Harris? Anyone else?
I can't see, Ms. Orchard? Good. And then Mr. Patel, you'll be next, right after Ms. Orchard. Go ahead, Maria.
Sorry.
It's not that cold in here.
Sorry. No, I'm cold all the time.
She's a professional, by the way.
I'm Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson Avenue. First, I wanted to say, I had worked the elections on the previous Tuesday. And I want to say, the young people that came out to assist was a huge help. We did have a lot of people volunteering and as well as say, that's an underpaid job. But yeah, there were a couple of 16-year-olds that were eager to help. So I was hoping, you know, as they get older, they continue their service. The other thing is, I think at one time, the council did vote, but it was turned down to move the elections back to April. I don't know if maybe you want to check on that. And forwarding up on, have we had made any progress? I know nothing's being done right now, but on the overcrowded issue, at some time, the kids will be coming back. And I know we had that commission. And was there any talk, further talk with the township about what other lands are available, quality for our schoolchildren? Thank you.
Just to let you know, Ms. Orchid, there is continuous talk with the administration. I know Dr. Bregan has spoken to the township. We also have spoken to some private owners of property. I think one of the items is, we're going to discuss in closed session. But the administration has not forgotten about the overcrowding issue. I will let you know that. Neither has the board. Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Thank you, board. Moyn Patel, board-elect. Okay, there's a few things I want to address. One thing is about the elections being pushed back to the summertime instead of November. I think it should be in November where everyone gets a chance to voice their choice, to make sure that they're represented. So that I would disagree with moving back. Okay. Second thing is, the approval, for the approval of policies, first reading, do we have details in regards to all the items that the BA had addressed? Is that available online or where is it that we can take a look at the details of what we are looking to approve? Thirdly, you brought up the, the politics of everything that's happening in the township. We were talking about issues based on the Board of Ed. This is something that has been happened, that isn't, that's been happening in the township. It should stay there because this is part of the committee of the whole's investigation, which is another farce. I'm going to read a letter I sent out to them. Because it was brought up, I want to address this at this moment so we could put an end to this nonsense. Right? Dear Council President Ship Freeman, I write to express my shock and outrage regarding the actions of the Edison Township Committee of the Whole. This committee was, this committee has taken nearly three years to investigate the source of the racist flyers. They were sent to Edison residents in 2017. To date, the committee has spent hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars in legal fees and produced zero substantiative evidence. On Wednesday, they held another meeting. And in that meeting, they disclosed a report from the U.S. Postal Inspection Service, which report simply recounts the investigation undertaken to date. Instead of advising the public that the postal report does not contain any findings, the Committee of the Whole treated it as proof of the unsubstantiated statements contained therein. Any reasonable review of the report would demonstrate that it does not include any findings, but rather merely the statement of IBA, Indian Business Association Chairman's, Chandrakant Patel's person, who is my avowed political enemy and who has zero credibility. In fact, this entire process is nothing but a disgusting smear orchestrated by Chandrakant Patel and his sister, IBA president, Deera Namin, a month before the school board election in the hopes that it would derail my candidacy. The allegations made by Chandrakant Patel are malicious and completely false. I, I have neither knowledge of the person or persons who sent out the racist flyers, nor was I ever at Chapati Restaurant when the flyers were allegedly being created, as claimed by Chandrakant Patel. The allegations in the report are patently false and defamatory. And categorically, I deny everything that they said. All right? This kangaroo committee run by Councilman Robert Deal, which is a, which is friends of a lot of people, and Sam Joshi, who instead of maintaining the air of impartiality and fairness, are blinded by their hatred of their political opponents, the committee has followed a questionable process from start to finish. The fact that no one had reached out, no investigation team nor committee of the whole had reached out to me. And they were saying my name in front of everybody, using the whole bully pulpit to accuse everybody. They are the investigators. They're the judges. They're the prosecutors. They're- They are the investigators, they're the judges, they're the prosecutors, they're everybody. Right? This was from day one, a political stunt by the opponents to push this out. Every year, this comes out. Every time there's an election, this comes out. Enough is enough, you're right, 100 percent. It has to end. That doesn't belong here, it belongs over there, leave it there. Let's talk about issues that represent our students and our taxpayers. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Ralph?
No, we're not gonna have back and forth.
No, I just wanted to clarify something.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not going back and forth. I don't do that. The only thing I want to say is, I agree, but once the Board of Ed's name is mentioned, they include us, and I wish it didn't.
Didn't. No, we all do, believe me. We all do. Miss, right here? Miss?
Board President Eric, could I just comment real quick?
Sure.
I think Mr. Patel asked about the first read for the 15 policies.
Oh, I'm sorry. We answered your question. About the policies.
And they will be at the Tuesday's meeting.
They'll be at the Tuesday's meeting in full print?
For review.
For review, for the second time.
Can we have it in advance or will you post it?
Uh, it will be posted.
That's, that's the first read.
Right.
That's the time, if you had comments, you would comment on that meeting.
Right.
The second, they don't get enacted till the second reading, which would be the following board meeting.
Right.
So that is the time to do that.
Yes. All right, Mr. Patel? You're welcome. Go ahead, miss. Mr. Johnson, you're behind the TV, if you want to speak, I'm gonna have to move over to your right.
Good evening, Dr. Bregan and Board members. Padmaja Chinta, from Edison. I know it's been a few days since the election, but it's the first board meeting since then, so I just want to congratulate the winners and commend other candidates who ran. I also want to acknowledge publicly the almost 8,000 people who believed in what I stood for, what my team stood for. I am truly, truly humbled and grateful for the support. Our cause may have fallen short, but let's not let it fall away. Now, democracy is a powerful thing, but it can become dangerous without any checks and balances. So I urge everyone who voted, regardless of who they voted for, to continue to stay engaged and make their voices heard. Now, I just want to talk as a parent. As a parent, I was really surprised, actually shocked, to read the news that came out two days after the election. I'm not here to point any fingers or make any demands, enough of that has already happened. But we are talking about some serious allegations here. If these allegations are right, it's a travesty for the entire district and the entire town. If these allegations are wrong, it's a travesty for the concerned individuals. Either way, it's a travesty. While we may disagree on who is at fault and what is right, I think we all can agree that this has become a huge distraction from the work of the board. Some of the public bickerings between current and future board members is very unfortunate, and frankly, does not behoove of elected officials. It takes time, energy, and focus away from the only job the board has to do, which is focus on education. So at the end of the day, it's our children who are losing out in all of this. So I'm here because I want to put the focus back on what's best for our children, and that is to have the undivided attention of the board. So towards that end, I was very surprised that I did not find any policy that governs situations like this. So I want to request the board and urge the board members to formulate policy so that this does not happen again. If there is an active federal investigation against any member, please consider having that member abstained from participating in the board's work during that time. This is what happens in police departments, or governments, or even some private companies. When individuals have investigation ongoing, they are put on administrative leave. I understand this is not a paid position, it's a part-time voluntary job, but we need to protect the sanctity of the system. So I urge the board to consider formulating policy, or passing a resolution, or whatever it is that needs to be done to put the rules in place, so that we are not found in the same situation again in future. What is done cannot be undone, and, you know, change is hard, and it takes time, and there is resistance. But the time is now. Let's not normalize this mess. Let's not make a mockery of our school district. Our children will be the one who will be at a loss, and this will also turn good people away from participating and getting involved in the school board. I hope this board will keep that in mind as they formulate policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, sir, please.
Venkata Bandy, 318 West Gate Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank Jerry White and Mohin for winning the elections. And I also would like to thank the members that are leaving, especially if, we miss you, soon. I think, you know, it is very unfortunate that somebody like council, the Committee of the Whole, who doesn't have a sanctity, and it is not even a federal investigation, like somebody said, it's a postal investigation, they don't even have the courage to come forward, they didn't even share the evidence. They really added people three years back, and they changed their names after three years. Where is the sanctity? And it bothers me, because eight years back, I moved to this town from west coast, that JP Edison is a great school. Guess what? I moved my son to the public school, from public to private school. I'm not sending my school to the high school here, my daughter is here, though. Are you guys the guinea pigs of the council? Today, one of their council members was fined for $100 for ethics committee. Do you think that you guys have been, you know, diverting tactics that where the council is completely filled with dishonest people? They're using BOE as a pawn, so that they want to deflect people to the BOE instead of actually blaming themselves? I'm telling you today that we have inefficient people as a councilman, dishonest people as a councilman, and why the hell they're coming to the BOE? BOE is for the good people. BOE doesn't have much money. BOE is for the students. Where is the overcrowding issue? What did we do for the staff? What are we doing for the attendance maintenance? What are we doing for reducing, you know, increasing the school ratings? Compared to when I came here, Edison used to be top. For the last four, five years, you're going down. Did we make a policy? Did we work towards it? Why are we wasting time, talking about nonsense from the council, talking from the nonsense from others? Let's not politicize this BOE. This BOE is non-partition. I wanted you guys to focus, give a damn about the council, damn about the people who are blaming politics. No EDO, no Republicans, it's pure non-partition group. Can I bring my kid back to the school? No, because this is completely rotten with politics. Can we clean this up? I heard that one of the admin has resigned. I'm hearing another BOE member is going to resign. What the hell is happening here? I truly don't understand. The politics completely took the control of the BOE, and B, you will not be the guinea pigs of the council, or the EDOs, or any other political body. Can you guys stand up on your own and say that, I am promising myself that in the next one year, the Edison High School's ratings will be from 30 or 40 to the 20, whereas our neighboring schools are improving and we are going down? Can we rate you before we vote you in future? The first question I'm ask, going to ask you guys is, did you help school ratings to improve? Did you guys support Bregan to get the school ratings improved? I think it's enough is enough. People gave the mandate to Jerry's team, Jerry, I'm looking at you, your team, that we voted 14,000, 12,000. I ran three WhatsApp groups of the parents. The 0% tax is first thing that we look up to you. Overcrowding is the second thing that we look up to you, not at the cost of losing people or students, they're what they deserve. Number three, all of you, if you guys don't help school rating improve by at least 10 points next year, I think none of you guys deserve here. I'm very honest, and you guys have to stand up and get back together and pass a resolution. Tell council that clean your shit first, you have non-dishonest people, your, your members are fined for $100. What is the $100 fine today? Is it a joke? You guys are all honest people, I'm giving you, I believe truly, you guys stand up and pass a resolution on this year, wanting to the council that don't dare BOE name to your deflection strategy. Please work together. I think I look up to Shivi, I look up to all other people, because they help us, Shivi, Shannon, Jerry, and Fall helped us with the parents, they reduce lot of noise in the WhatsApp groups. They are the one who's bringing all the issues to you. I wanted this collaboration to continue, and please help Edison Schools great again. Don't give a shit about what council says, what EDO says, what Republican Party says. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Last call. No one? Okay. Public portion is closed.
Can I have a, can I have a statement here?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I just want to have a quick statement here. I am elected to serve the students and the residents here. I do not want to waste time of this back and forth of political vendetta. So I, on November 5th, I made a statement to all the news joints, which our fellow council members sent the investigator report to all the news outlets before they give it to their fellow committeeman and committeewoman. The council folks has to get the report from the news media. So this is statement I sent to the news media on November 5th. I, Jerry Shi, has never been to Choppati with boxes of racist flyer. Chandrakant Patel's claim of me delivering or putting stamps or labels on racist flyer is a flat-out lie. And I'm also gonna read this into record, a sworn statement from Councilman A.J. Patel. And I have some copies here, if anyone has interest, you can come over and get it. Some of the board members have seen it, some probably have not, but I have copies here. This is the email from Councilman Patel to the Committee of the Whole, two members, Rob Bob Deal and, and Mr. Gomez. This is November 6, 4:33 PM. Hello all, I have received numerous calls on yesterday's meeting and wish to clarify statements during the Committee of the Whole yesterday, which I believe were misconstrued or not properly communicated. During my statement with authority, I corroborated the presence of two employees of Choppati Restaurant when I saw some flyers being assembled and prepared for mailing, which I did not immediately recognize as the flyers in question. But some of my statements may have been misinterpreted. I did not say that I saw all of the named individuals in the report at the restaurant. I did visit Choppati Restaurant in late October, and observed a mailing being prepared, although I did not participate in anything that was happening, and left the place immediately. Specifically, I saw a few workers, parentheses, who I know assume, who I now assume includes Aleosis and Joseph de Souza assembling the mailer. These were the people whose presence I was corroborating. At no point ever have I seen Sharik Ahmad, Mohin Patel, Jerry Shi, Mahesh Bhagya, and Satish Pundey in Choppati handling any of the flyers in question or carrying stamps for those flyers. It was also stated in the report that I and the other named individuals attended a meeting at Choppati to discuss the flyer. This is not correct. No such meeting ever took place, and in fact, I have never met with this group at Choppati. I hereby certify that the foregoing statement made by me are true. Thank you, A.J. Patel. This is a sworn statement from A.J. Patel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Anyone else? Before we go to the closed session? All right. Mr. Mashad? Closed session resolution?
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon their herein specified subject or subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding student matters, bus contracts, litigation brought on by former employees, ETA grievances, perking unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leaves of absences, changes of status, longevity, salary adjustments for professional and certified staff, driver ed makeup exams, special education personnel, substitutes, co-curricular changes, coaching appointments, and authorization to approve requests for extended health benefits. Three, it is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time that the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Mashad. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Mr. Shi? Ms. Pang? Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky? See her?
Yes, she said yes.
All right, Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Erica?
Yes.
Well, yes. Thank you. Right now, we're gonna go into a closed session. We will not come out and take any votes on anything, so I just want to let everyone know. They can go home. Have a great, happy Thanksgiving with your family, be safe, social distance, and enjoy the break next week. Thank you.